Raids and the ICE presence, families are afraid. They're concerned for their safety, for their rights, and what tomorrow may bring. And so we have assembled our team here to make sure that families are aware of their rights. We have a Know Your Rights campaign and are issuing red cards. We are conducting workshops and trainings for service providers as well as community residents so that they too are aware of what rights they have.
ICE was driving through the community. And so we have put together measures in place, and you'll see across the city, a number of organizations are finding ways to distribute food directly to families without putting them in harm's way.
In tiempos difíciles como estos, es importante reconocer y apoyar a las organizaciones que brindan consuelo, unidad, y apoyo tangible a quienes más los necesitan. Hoy nos encontramos aquí reunidos con varias organizaciones que hacen precisamente eso. No somos solos proveedores de servicios, somos vecinos, conectores y defensores.
Improving safety for transit riders starts on the sidewalk. A citywide improvement program is giving bus shelters the upgrades needed to connect people to their bus. In Koreatown, the 150th Bus Shelter transformation was a cause for celebration.
We're here in Koreatown at the intersection of Olympic and Vermont Boulevard, celebrating the 150th installation of our STAP bus shelter. Koreatown is the most densely populated neighborhood in all of Los Angeles with over 100,000 residents, and we're so excited to celebrate with the community a phenomenal transformation of an existing bus shelter from a static to a much more modern amenity-featured bus shelter.
Welcome to Not Your Mother's Bus Stop, right? This is not what the bus stops look like when I was in school and depended on them. It has lighting, it has Wi-Fi. If you've ever been on a bus stop and missed your bus, that surge of frustration is not knowing when the next one's going to arrive, but this tells you. It tells you when your next bus is coming. That's a sigh of relief.
We're talking about improved infrastructure for transit-dependent riders, many essential workers in a neighborhood that's been overlooked for too long. The technology aspect of this investment is huge, but as summers get warmer, sometimes the most important thing is shade. A shelter to catch a bus and make our constituents' lives a little bit easier.
Moving forward, I'd like to see more public and private partnership. When the city does the good work, we as a community need to amplify that message and let people know what's happening in the city of L.A., in particular, things that affect public transportation and infrastructure. We want to help get the message out, let them know that it's safe to be on the streets and taking public transportation once again.
So STAP program is a very community-driven process. It was born out of the need to provide shelters to many of our seniors and our young people riding the bus and other public infrastructure, but also in communities like Koreatown where it's been very underserved for many, many generations, that the community of Koreatown has requested for these types of infrastructure being made here, and we're hoping to install many, many more across this community.
Find out how bus shelters across the city are being improved at streetsla.lacity.org. From bus shelter glow-ups to making improvements elsewhere, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez wants Angelenos to give their evaluations to the Department of Rec and Parks. That feedback will help to assess future needs for city parks.
Welcome, thank you all for being here. It's what is a really important opportunity for our community.
Today, we're at Lakeview Terrace Rec Center where we are engaging in the Park Needs Assessment, something that I fought for while I was on the Budget and Finance Committee because I want Angelenos to be able to give direct feedback to the city of Los Angeles about their priorities and needs for their local parks.
Olin is a landscape architecture planning and urban design firm, and we're supporting the city this year in the Parks Needs Assessments. As a consultant, we help survey the community, to help do drawings, to help provide clarity, and to bring all of this data from the community engagement together to really help form a vision for the next 25 years under the direction of the Department of Rec and Parks.
Really, what we've been hearing is that people really want to see a lot of unprogrammed spaces to do recreational activities. They want to see the department focus on things like festivals, so the community has places to gather. So really, what we want to do as a part of our second phase of outreach is to talk more about those types of amenities and things that they'd like to see in their park system. Because again, for the next 25 years, we're really setting the standard for what we want to do. So we want a park system that reflects what we're hearing from the community, but also what we think they want to do going forward into the future.
We have a team, 13 different firms that are working to help the city on this under our leadership, and all of them are coming together with different knowledge sets and different expertise. So we have people that are experts at water, we have people that are experts at equity, we have people that are experts around public art, we have people that are experts around stormwater. And when that is coming together, we're able to map around the city where different priorities really show up. It's really great data, but then when we support it with what we're hearing directly from the community, I think that's where it's most interesting.
Everyone comes to their parks for different reasons. Some might come for youth recreational sports, some might come for childcare. So there's a number of needs that need to be met at our parks facilities, and we want to encourage families to be able to give their input so that we design a system that works for them. It's really important for people to be able to voice their concerns, and this is giving them that space and for us to prioritize the funding so that we can invest in those improvements.
It's a college signing day celebration that means a bit more. Many students at this event are the first and their families to go to college, so the Community Investment for Families Department is adding some support into the festivities.
We're thrilled to celebrate our second annual College Signing Day, brought to you by the Community Investment for Families Department in partnership with the Youth Development Department. In our network of family source centers, we have 19 centers throughout the city, and one of our signature programs within the family source system is the College Corner Program. The College Corner Program helps young people apply for college, they help them apply for financial aid, they organize campus visits, and they do so much more to encourage not just the students but their families to pursue a post-secondary education.
I am the first in my family and the first out of three siblings to go to university, and the university that I will be attending is Yale University.
The College Corner Program is a program that is available to any student that resides in the city of Los Angeles, so that is really the only criteria. It's open to every student, and we want more students to take advantage of these resources.
I'm here to celebrate my enrollment at Cal State Long Beach. I didn't feel confident in where I was going to go, but they helped me a lot. I've gotten more, more help than I feel like I deserve.
Today, we gathered with over 200 students, and they are attending some of the top universities, not just in the state of California, but we have students that will be enrolled at Yale University, at all of our top universities in California such as UCLA, our Cal State system, our community colleges. So we're just so excited and thrilled to continue to support them as they move into this next chapter.
I'm really looking forward to be able to go and explore a new environment, new people, new culture, everything, and just be able to grow alongside so many people who aspire to learn and do something and change the world for the better.
Today, we also announced the creation of a new scholarship program, the Olivia Mitchell Scholarship Program, and we awarded them with $500 each to help support them in their college journey. We are sending a strong message to all of the families that we're here. We're here to support them, and we want them to break through all of the glass ceilings and be able to accomplish all of their goals and aspirations. To learn more about the family source system, we encourage people to visit our website.
Mayor Bass, Councilwoman Katie Yaroslavsky, and volunteers all got busy at the recent AAPI Day of Service. With L.A. hosting major events in the coming years, volunteering to do good has the extra benefit of showing the city in a positive light.
You ready to go out and beautify our city?
So we're here at one of 10 locations across the city for Shine L.A., which is a community beautification effort. So we're here in Koreatown with a bunch of volunteers from across the community to help clean it up and make it beautiful.
I want you to know, this gathering here, this is not the only one. Throughout the city of Los Angeles today, over 1,000 Angelenos are participating in the Shine L.A. Day of Service.
We need to get Angelenos in every neighborhood involved in beautifying our neighborhoods and preparing for major global events that are just around the corner.
Shine L.A. is the mayor's program to emphasize cleaning Los Angeles and getting ready for all these international visitors that we are expecting in '26, '27, '28, culminating in the Olympic and Paralympic Games. So we're here to basically get our house ready, because when you expect company, you clean.
And one thing that is especially inspiring to me is to see so many young people here, and I hope this is the beginning of a lifetime of service.
Reach out to us if you have ideas on projects you want to work on. We're literally the thing that connects this neighborhood to City Hall.
We've all been living in this community for almost like our entire lives, so we want to beautify our community and where we reside in. People definitely turned out. They turned out, and they turned out with their attitude and their energy, and I'm definitely excited to be here. I feel like the community definitely benefits from this, and you can tell the heart is there.
So across the city, there are going to be events like this on a regular basis going forward for the next few years. We hope people come out, get involved. You can check out the website for Shine L.A. and figure out how to get involved in your own community.
Every one of our neighborhoods deserves to shine.
L.A. Public Library has online resources for immigrants and new citizens, city support for downtown businesses impacted by protests, and a new relief fund for disaster survivors. These stories up next on City Beat.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a number of Know Your Rights resources available online. Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution, and according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency family preparedness, immigration options, rapid response phone numbers for L.A., and the Know Your Rights Card. The library's Know Your Rights Card is available to everyone online in 23 different languages. For more information, click on the Know Your Rights banner at lapl.org. Mayor Karen Bass announced that resources would be immediately available to support downtown businesses impacted by protests in the city. The mayor's Office for Economic Development, Councilmember Isabel Hurado, and the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department are providing help online. Impacted businesses can join webinars to learn more about assistance, including graffiti removal, legal aid, and employment support. According to Hurado, local businesses are the backbone of downtown L.A., and the council member's office will support them through every challenge. For more, visit mayor.lacity.gov press. Following the devastating wildfires in January, L.A. City's Housing Authority, HACLA, wants to let Angelenos know of a new source of relief for disaster survivors. Cal Assist Mortgage Fund is a new relief program from the state of California, which will support homeowners impacted by disasters between January 2023 and January 2025. The Cal Assist Mortgage Fund will cover eligible homeowners for three months of mortgage payments up to $20,000. Before applying, review the list of qualified disasters for this program, confirm the income limits, and check that your mortgage servicer is participating. For more information, visit calassistmortgagefund.org.
L.A. Sanitation hosted its ever-popular Open House events this year. These are more than a simple open house, as the trash trucks are open to kids taking on the controls. It's hands-on learning at its best.
Well, today, we're having our North Central Open House. This is an opportunity for our L.A. SAN employees to volunteer their time and engage with the community. And educate them on a lot of our programs, like our organics program, our recycling program. We really want to engage with the residents so that they understand the value in recycling. We have one earth, we have limited resources, and your actions as a resident of sorting your trash and making sure it's properly put in the bins allows us to convert those commodities into useful products and save the earth.
So here in the city of Angels, it is so important for us to sort our trash properly, to understand the recycling rules and the organics rules, to make sure that we're calling in our bulky item requests so that we're not leaving furniture sitting on the curb. L.A. SAN will come and pick it up for free. You just have to call us at 1-800-773-2489. You call Will Hall.
He is in love with garbage trucks. All the kids love garbage trucks.
What I love most about these events is all the families that come here and get to explore the trash trucks. Kids love trash trucks. So they come, they get in the trucks, they operate the controls, they honk the horns. Then they get into another truck where they can actually take a ride around the yard, and they just have a blast. It's a great photo opportunity. And after that, they walk through all of our educational booths and learn all about sustainability tips that they can implement in their own homes.
Our goal is here is to make sure that our residents know the value of what we do every day. Sanitation's out there collecting recyclables, organics, and trash for, you know, 750,000 residents and over 6,000 tons of materials, and making sure that that is reused and put back to use in our communities. A lot of people don't see us every day, but we are the ones behind the scenes protecting the environment.
For more information, please visit our website at lacitysan.org.
Senior prom is on the social calendar for older Angelenos who look forward to the dancing and the community gathering. It all takes place thanks to volunteers, St. Barnabas Senior Services, and L.A. City's Department of Aging.
The participants today at the senior prom are older adults from across Los Angeles. It's really an opportunity for us to bring together different cultures, different people to enjoy a day of fun, frivolity, and good food.
I like to see older people enjoy themselves, because I enjoy myself. I entertain them, so they, you know, I kind of bring them out. So they do a little twine, you know, do it. If I can do it, you can do it.
So I really hope today that the older adults, the volunteers, everyone that's here walks away with a new appreciation of different cultures, a fun experience, activities, dancing, and just a great time.
Good food and good entertainment. They have a picture-taking. We didn't have to pay for it. They're lucky that I have to pay for it, and then they bring a lot of stuff to offer us.
I was so excited to be part of this event because it really brought together not only staff, older adults, and caregivers, but also volunteers from across Los Angeles to really make an impact in people's lives. And it was so inspiring and has been such a rewarding experience.
It feels good because we need more things for us older people.
So the senior prom was brought together through not only donations from companies, individuals, but also through funding from the Department of Aging and the city of Los Angeles. We're really honored to have the general manager, Jaime Pacheco, attend, and also councilperson, Nithya Raman. Their support made this possible and made this event a real success.
Beautiful people, nice to see everybody happy.
So my favorite part of prom really has been seeing everybody dressing up, having a good time, and dancing. I love to dance myself. It might seem like it's just a dance, but for them, it's something they look forward to all year long.
So come out and enjoy yourself, to see what it's like, you will love it. I love it.
The lights behind the marquee are a distinct beacon on Lancashire Boulevard. Behind the scenes, this Department of Cultural Affairs Center is supporting performing arts in the community with a dance studio and an intimate theater space inside.
The Lancashire Arts Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The city of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined, modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like 5 or 6 o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on, and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Arts Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions. Sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater is very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class, we have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions, or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes, being able to grow the performing arts in a community is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident, the ability to express themselves, and give a space for people that are a little bit different, another space to play, because being able to play is so important just for our mental health as well as for like the health of the community, and it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming, as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore LNK. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov. That's our website.
In this week's Things to Do, get down to some free summer sounds at Levitt Pavilion, enjoy some tribute acts on July 4th and beyond, and catch L.A. master artists' work at COLA 2025. All this up next on Things to Do.
Calling all music lovers, join Levitt L.A. for 10 free summer concerts at MacArthur Park. Each Saturday in summer, Levitt Pavilion welcomes a new sound to fast fusion, Afro beats, and the sounds of Central America, along with electric rock and punk. Levitt Pavilion is the place to get your global groove on with something for everyone. These free concerts are supported by the City Departments of Cultural Affairs and Recreation and Parks, and are sponsored by Councilmember Unisus Hernandez. See you on the lawn to celebrate music and community each Saturday starting at 7:00 p.m., except July 5th, as there's no show that day. For more information, visit levittlosangeles.org. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a summer of free events with the Valley Cultural Foundation. The Fourth of July Extravaganza celebrates the nation's birthday with a free concert and a dazzling 20-minute fireworks display. There will also be food trucks and vendors on site. Up to 40,000 people can be accommodated for this event, so get there early to claim your spot. The concert on July 4th features Strange Days, a tribute to the Doors, with other acts scheduled to perform in Warner Park over the next few weeks of summer. For more details on the Fourth of July Extravaganza and other free Warner Park events, check the website, valleycultural.org. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery, LeMAG, presents COLA 2025. This is an exhibition of the city's Department of Cultural Affairs' independent master artists of 2025, who share their creative visions on a wide range of themes. Nine L.A.-based artists in visual literary and performing arts will show their works, which include video, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and installation. Head to LeMAG at Barnes-Dahl Art Park for COLA 2025 Visual Artist Exhibition from July 17th to August 30th. For more information on gallery hours, visit lemag.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Please check the websites for any changes to those events. And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 25th day of June in the year 2025. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in person in this John Ferraro City Council chambers. Madam Clerk, if we can begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 11 members present in accord, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of June 24, 2025.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember Ramon seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Councilmember Park moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds. Can we run through the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection.
There are several requests to continue items today. Item 25, there is a request to continue to June 27, 2025, and there is also a request to continue item 47 to August 6, 2025.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. Items 4 through 29 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item number 4 has been submitted and available online under Council File 23-0581-S1. Item 26 was scheduled in error. The council will not need to take action today inasmuch as the item was acted on yesterday, Tuesday, June 24, 2025. Items 30 through 46 are items which public hearings have not been held. Finally, items 47 through 49 are closed session items for which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, these items are now before us. Now is the time for specials members. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to move that we adopt the APLCE report as amended for item number 5, please. I would like to call items 8, 19, 20, and 29 special for a separate vote, and I would like to continue item 11 and 34 for one month.
All right, Madam Clerk, we got all that?
Councilmember, item number 11, continue for one month.
11 and 34, continued for one month, please.
Okay, 11 and 34, continue to one month, and that would be July 30, 2025. The first day council returns from recess, and that would be July 30, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then you had an amendment. Does that have a second and been circulated?
That would be item 5, Councilmember. Is there a second to Councilmember Hernandez's request, motion for item 5 to adopt the Arts Committee report?
Mr. McCosker.
Oh, Mr. McCosker, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we all set? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that item number 28, that we move to adopt the Public Safety Committee report?
Is there a second to Mr. Lee's motion?
Thank you. Mr. McCosker?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCosker, you have a special? You're standing? I guess not? All right?
Yeah, I do, actually. I'm not sure how the Chair of Budget and Finance wanted to handle the closed session items, but I would like to briefly hear Ocean's Eleven enclosed.
All right, so we'll go to that, we'll go to close for that item.
That's item 48.
48, 48. Councilmember Ramon?
I had a question about item 24 that I'm still trying to get answered before we vote on it. If we could hold that on the desk till after public comment for a vote?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
Mr. President, item 6 for comments, please.
All right.
Item 6, sir?
Yes.
For comments. Any other specials members? All right, seeing none, what items does that leave for us to consider at this time?
Just a moment, sir. Okay, ready, sir. Council may now vote on items 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, 12 through 18, 21 through 23, 27, as well as 28, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next, council may vote on the closed session that was not called special, and that would be item 49, and that was heard in Budget and Finance Committee.
So item number 49, Councilmember Jaroslawski, if you can give us some guidance on that closed session item?
Thank you, Council President. B and F Committee considered items 48 and 49 in committee on June 17, and I recommend we approve these items.
All right, so 48 we're holding, and 49 will consider now?
Yes, sir. May I read the settlement?
Yes.
For item 49, in the case entitled Jeffrey Fried et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $230,000 in settlement.
All right, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next, Mr. President, there are presentations or public comments, sir.
All right, and we have all our separate vote items done?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. There are separate votes. There are items 8, 19, 20, and 29. Councilmember Hernandez, may those all be voted at the same time?
All right. All right, if the council is fine with us considering all of those items at the same time, I don't see any objection to that. Let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
9 ayes, 3 noes.
Also, Mr. President, item 6 is called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for comments, sir, and that is available.
Mr. Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm going to try to bring a little joy into this room, but today we are going to be approving for what will be, believe it or not, the first public bathroom in Hollywood.
Wow.
Which is incredible. Now, when I got into office, I thought it was outrageous that the number-one most famous tourist destination in the world had no place for you to go, number two. And together with the Hollywood partnership, we rolled up our sleeves and took care of business, and within a year or so, you'll finally be able to take a break in Hollywood. You don't have to hold it in anymore. And before you start poo-pooing this motion, these bathrooms will be clean, fully staffed, and part of the new visitor center in the heart of Hollywood that will help tourists get around. By the way, who wrote these TPs? So be on the lookout for your invitation to the first inaugural flush in Hollywood. Thank you so much.
Mr. Soto Martinez, everybody. Let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, council may now either have presentations or public comments, sir.
All right, so we have a couple of presentations today. We'll begin with Council District 4 and recognition of Alzheimer's Awareness Month, which is a very important issue in so many of our neighborhoods around Los Angeles.
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank the Council President for letting us take a few minutes before today's council meeting to recognize Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, an issue that is close to my heart and close to our office's heart because of many personal impacts. Alzheimer's is not a funny subject, but today we are lucky to be joined by two very funny people who know how to bring some humor and a lot of heart to even the most difficult topics. Seth Rogen and Lauren Miller-Rogan, the founders of Hilarity for Charity, a nonprofit dedicated to raising awareness around Alzheimer's and working to care for the families impacted by the disease. And the unfortunate truth is that now that is so many of us. Right now, there are an estimated 7.2 million people living with Alzheimer's in the United States, and nearly 200,000 of them are right here in Los Angeles County. States, and nearly 200,000 of them are right here in Los Angeles County. That is a number that is hard to wrap your brain around. Nearly everyone knows someone, a grandparent, a parent, a partner, a neighbor, a colleague, a friend. The disease is heartbreaking in ways that can sometimes be hard to put words to. There is no cure. A diagnosis cannot be reversed. And it doesn't just affect the person who gets it, it ripples through entire families and through entire communities. And as our population ages, these ripple effects are about to be felt much further. It is estimated that over the next seven years, nearly 900,000 additional direct care workers will be needed to care for the growing population of people living with dementia, the largest worker gap of any single occupation in the U.S. Right now, more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid care for someone with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. And one-third of these caretakers are daughters, including some daughters in my own office. I've seen firsthand the toll this takes and how navigating the complexities of this disease and our overburdened healthcare system can feel like a Sisyphean task, which is why I am so grateful to have Lauren and Seth here with us today, because they have made it their mission to provide support for these caretakers. They took their experience and turned it into purpose. Through Hilarity for Charity, they've built a support system for caregivers, they've raised millions of dollars for research and for education, and they've brought visibility to an illness that is too often kept in the shadows, and they've done it with humor and with humanity. They remind people through their work that they are not alone. Lauren and Seth have created a community right here in Los Angeles and across the entire country that is funding the future of brain health, and it is changing the conversation. They are reaching young people and saying, hey, this isn't just a disease that is impacting your uncle. They're telling the truth about what this disease is and how we can take action to ensure that our brains are as healthy as can be while also calling on all of us, especially those of us in leadership, to protect and strengthen critical systems like Medicare, which so many Americans with Alzheimer's rely on as their primary source of care. That is why today it is my honor to officially recognize Lauren and Seth and Hilarity for Charity for their incredible work and thank them for reminding us that even in the darkest corners of illness, we can find connection and community and perhaps even laughter. Um, and I, with that, I'd like to invite both of them to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you so much, uh, to the Los Angeles City Council for this incredibly meaningful recognition.
We especially want to thank Councilman Nethia Rahman. Your leadership and your commitment to raising awareness around brain health and dementia prevention are deeply, deeply appreciated.
Very much so. And by recognizing June, uh, as Alzheimer's, uh, and Brain Awareness Month here in Los Angeles, you are helping to shine a light on a disease that is far too often kept in the shadows.
When we founded HFC over a decade ago, it was in response to something personal and painful, watching a loved one experience Alzheimer's far too young.
Since then, we've been driven to make brain health a public priority and to support families navigating this incredibly devastating illness.
Today, this resolution reminds us that the city of Los Angeles stands with us in that mission.
We share this recognition with every caregiver, researcher, and advocate.
Together, we are changing the narrative around brain health, one conversation, one community, and one city at a time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I've got, uh, a few speakers on the Q, uh, starting with Councilmember Padilla.
It's become a trend now that I go first more often now. It's okay. But, um, uh, Councilmember Nethia Rahman, thank you so much for bringing this presentation. You know, I've, I've always been a big fan of making sure that we elevate those monthly themes related to health, especially because, you know, we're the city, we're not the county per se, so we don't talk about it enough. But we definitely have a constituency and an audience that should know about these things to start the conversation. So thank you for bringing it here. You know, I grew up with a great aunt, uh, with Alzheimer's, uh, but it was in Mexico, and it was a small town, and it was a whole lifestyle related to making sure she would be okay in a small town. Um, and it really trained my family. But now, here at home, this new generation, like my mom and my actual aunts and uncles are dealing with this, and me and my cousins find ourselves in a position where we have to rethink and re-strategize now, um, in a major city. So, uh, it is a very serious thing. I know we've done very good as a, as a region to talk about mental health, but now we're also realizing that there's much more to learn about brain health. So thank you, uh, appreciate you. And, um, I have never really been a big fan of celebrities getting involved in policy and politics, but for this one, I appreciate it. Thank you both for what you do and using your star power for something incredibly specific and productive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lee?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Rahman, for bringing, uh, these two P wonderful people in. Uh, you know, not only have you made us laugh throughout the years, uh, big fan of the movies, but your work in this area, you know, being some, a son who's dealing with a parent whose mom, um, was a brilliant, strong, uh, woman, I, you know, she was always the boss, uh, in, in the family, to watch her slowly sort of decline and see not only the effects that it's having on her, but the effects that it's having on the entire family when someone, you know, forgets how to cook. Someone forgets, you know, starts, you know, thinking, you know, different thoughts about how other families or members are out to get them or some, the, the, the situation that it creates, it's, it, uh, I just appreciate that there are people out there finding this, understanding. I mean, I'm new to this, I'm learning, you know, the difference between what is dementia, what is Alzheimer's, all the different sort of categories that come with it. And I just really appreciate that two people like you who have such a high profile are bringing so much attention to this and the families that are awfully, uh, uh, that are obviously suffering through this. So thank you, Councilmember Rahman, for bringing it. Thank you, Rogan family.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee, and, and thank you so much, Councilwoman Rahman, for bringing this presentation. And thank you to the two of you, uh, for putting very important attention on this issue that does not get talked about in popular culture, but almost all of us deal with it. You know, those of us, we live in a big city and we work so hard to have a good public transportation system. Well, when you've got a family with Alzheimer's, they can walk out the street, board a bus and a train, and it is one of the most terrifying things that you, you can ever experience. Uh, and there aren't a lot of places to go for help. Uh, so, you know, folks in my office right now are looking for day and nighttime care, and the price tag they're getting back is 25, $20,000 a month. $20,000 a month. This is right after you just got done paying for college for kids, which has also gone through the roof. And so it's, it's one of the big affordability issues and livability issues that doesn't get nearly enough attention. So I thank you for taking the time to come and share with us and, and all that you've done. And on behalf of the council, I'll apologize for Mr. Soto Martinez, uh, Mr. Rogan, he was trying out his one-liners just in case you needed someone to play a councilman in, in your next film. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you. And then just take a picture. Oh, yeah. This is your, yeah, that's the, yeah.
Our next presentation, uh, exciting one, will be brought to us by the one and only Mr. Tim McCosker of the Great One Five.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. This presentation has been decades in the making, decades in the making, and I, I did have some good bathroom hu- humor that was set aside for this, but Ugo used all my lines, so I'm just gonna move on. Good morning, colleagues. Today, I have the honor of recognizing someone, someone and his family and his friends and his colleagues, but someone who has left an indelible mark on local government and public service, not only here in the city of Los Angeles, but throughout all of Southern California. Let's hear it for Rick Cole. Rick is the textbook definition of what it means to be a public servant, a servant leader, someone who is, you know, critically and deeply involved in the workings of government and who can even get into sort of the nerdy stuff about making government work and figure out how it also works towards compassion and equity, because it all matters. Making government work and making it work right is the only way that we can serve our people. Uh, for decades, for decades, Rick's career has spanned multiple departments and jurisdictions, but he has always, always been at the local level. He has been a local, closest-to-the-people public servant. Your career is a testament to the belief that government can and must be both smart and compassionate. You've shown how to revitalize downtowns without displacement. You've shown how to hold ourselves accountable so that we can do those things and get ourselves out of the way of making sure that we're serving people. You've modernized budgeting and planning tools. You've put people back into the center of civic life, the purpose for which we're, we are here. Today, we celebrate not just your accomplishments, but the values behind those accomplishments, the values of equity, innovation, data-driven decisions, civic listening, and I'll come back to it, equity, you know, uplifting especially the folks who don't have anyone else to serve them, and we need to lift them up. You have had an impact on Pasadena, Ventura, Azusa, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, uh, over the course of my little career. I feel like I've been on the fringes of all of that. We've had a lot of mutual friends, and I've known about all of your work from Azusa to Ventura, and certainly I have known your work in Los Angeles. It's an honor to be with you today, to be with your colleagues, and to be with your extended family and friends. And at this time, I would like to bring to the podium and welcome into our chambers our controller, our controller, Mr. Kenneth Mejia.
Thank you, Councilmember McCosker, for this honor for our Chief Deputy Controller, Rick Cole. Rick Cole has been in government for longer than I've been alive. I point this out not to be, not to highlight our obvious age difference, but to speak to his over 40 years of public service to the greater Los Angeles region. When Rick got elected to the Pasadena City Council, he was elected at 29 years old. He might have seen a little bit of himself when we ran for office. And I was so surprised when Rick reached out to me, because as a young candidate and when I was running for controller, uh, we had no endorsements, no one knew who we were, and he was actually the only one in City Hall or, or part of any political establishment to, to endorse us and help us. And we ended up, actually, thanks to Rick, we ended up getting 513,000 votes. So, Rick, I appreciate, appreciate your support. But who's counting? Yeah, exactly. But that's exactly the kind of person Rick is. Rick is someone who deeply cares about mentoring the next generation of leaders. What matters to Rick is not establishing a legacy for himself, but building a better future for everyone else. Rick is always so generous with his time and knowledge, and I can't count the number of times I've turned to Rick for his vision and practical advice. When, we can ca- we can count on Rick for literally anything. The city of L.A. has been far too lucky to have Rick as our Chief Deputy Controller these past two years, and Rick has guided us through many troubling times, especially through our major transitions and crises with the implementation of our HRP system and our financial troubles. Some of the solutions that Rick has long called for, such as multi-year budgeting and a capital infrastructure plan, are now being embraced by this council and Mayor Bass. As much as we would like to keep Rick forever, his full attention is desperately needed right now in his hometown of Pasadena. The city of L.A. owes an enormous debt of gratitude to Rick for his decades of services and dedication. Thank you to my mentor, friend, and Chief Deputy Controller, Rick Cole.
And now something I've, I've nervously and with a little bit of trepidation from time to time said from the podium during committee meetings. Mr. Cole, would you like to speak?
Let me first introduce my family, um, my brave twin daughters, Angel and Luz. Their brother Diego and his partner, Siomara. And their indomitable mom, Catherine Perez. Kenneth, thank you for the honor and the privilege of working, as he always corrects me, I've always said I work for him, he always has said I work with him. I'm deeply grateful for the honor of serving with you and with Jane Nguyen, uh, your Chief of Staff, and the whole team. Uh, we have our division heads here, Shane Min, James Robinson, Devang Panchel, and Wally Awawali. It's an incredible team of civil servants in the controller's office. And all the people that I've known in this city over the last four decades, thank you for inspiring me. I could not let this occasion pass without sharing some thoughts, and I ask for your indulgence. I have never forgotten the awe that I felt when I walked into these chambers on December 21, 1985. I was senior deputy to Richard Alatorre on his first day in office. Now, after four decades of public service, I have never been more alarmed about our future. You know the converging crises facing this city, a state of emergency on homelessness, a devastating firestorm, thousands of city jobs eliminated, a crisis of affordable housing, and a federal administration literally at war with the government and the people of Los Angeles. Those are the headlines, but they're also the insidious threats of a weakening economy, a crumbling infrastructure, grotesque inequality of income, and a failing public trust in government's ability to confront these existential challenges. If we can't pave our streets, repair our sidewalks, house our homeless, trim our trees, light our bridges, and fix our fire trucks, how can we host an Olympics in three years? L.A. is a complex city of 4 million people, over 400 square miles, more than 40 departments, more than 40,000 city staff. On a good day, it's an incredibly difficult city to manage, and we haven't had very many good days lately. What makes this all so much harder is that L.A. is not designed to work. And that's not a criticism, that's an historic fact, because 100 years ago, the authors of the city charter designed this government to avoid the, the corruption that they saw in Chicago and New York. They deliberately designed this government to widely disperse authority. To avoid abuse, they made power diffuse. Yet, L.A. worked despite the charter. It was the climate, the industry, the entertainment, and above all, the incredible diversity and creative spirit of the people of L.A. that made Los Angeles the embodiment of the California dream. But things that can't go on forever don't. For decades, this city has ridden the cycles of boom and bust, making short-term decisions with long-term consequences. For decades, this city systematically under-invested in its, in modernizing its infrastructure. For decades, city government systematically under-invested in our city staff's training, technology, equipment, and facilities. And for decades, city government has systematically perpetuated outmoded practices that are simply unsustainable in the world we live in. This is a moment of truth. I know some people say, well, you know, L.A.'s had hard times before, we can come through this, we'll be better than ever. It's tempting to rely on our resilience, to hope that this too shall pass. But that's not the world we live in. Hope is not a plan. Two months ago, in these chambers, Mayor Bass recognized the gravity of this moment, and she said, "We need a fundamental overhaul of city government to deliver the clean, safe, and orderly neighborhoods that Angelenos deserve in the place they call home and to reverse decades of failure on homelessness." She's right. That is exactly what we need, a complete overhaul of city government, bold systemic change. It's time to redesign L.A. to actually work. Mayors need a chief operating officer to work across department silos. We need rigorous, innovative, citywide management. That's why cities like Long Beach, Glendale, Santa Monica, Pasadena, West Hollywood deliver services more effectively and efficiently. services more effectively and efficiently. Your department managers need to be freed from micromanagement. Empower them to actually run their departments so you can hold them accountable for the job they're paid to do. L.A. obviously needs a chief financial officer to put its house in order, its fiscal house in order. We need a two-year budget and a real five-year capital plan. It's time to shift from base budgeting to performance budgeting. Allocate resources to what works away from what doesn't. It's not rocket science. You can't have a world-class city and a world-class workforce unless you invest in world-class training, technology, equipment, and facilities for your workforce. So it's past time to reform an antiquated civil service system that was designed for a world of typewriters and radios instead of the world we live in today, a world of artificial intelligence and data, digital data. So empower your workers. No level of pay can compensate for working in a mind-numbing bureaucracy. You have dedicated public servants who strive to keep this city going every day despite everything. Why not truly partner with labor? Unleash the innovative spirit of your frontline workers to redesign the services so we can live within our means. Maybe you have different ideas. Maybe you have better ideas. But what L.A. can't settle for is anything less than bold systemic reform. I know that Los Angeles is the economic engine and the cultural soul of Southern California. A world-class city deserves a world-class city government, one that's designed to work. Extraordinary times call for extraordinary leadership. Beneath the broken sidewalks is a broken system. Because I've had the privilege of working with each and every one of you and your staffs, I know that together, you have the capacity to lead this city toward bold systemic reform to make this city work. So I implore you, Carpe diem, seize the day. God bless you. I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, Rick, for reminding us that when we built this beautiful building and these chambers, we put a podium here and a microphone here for a reason. We turned the horseshoe around and had it face this podium and the people for a reason. Thank you so much. I'm sure other council members have comments.
They do. Councilmember Jurado.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to thank Rick Cole for your service and all that you've done for the city, especially as a side-chair urban planner, you being honored by urban planning departments across the nation. I've studied your work. You brought me to great streets and figuring out what that means for our cities and streetscaping. So thank you for that, and good luck in your next endeavor.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Professor Cole, Rick, why can't we get rid of you? It's been three times we've tried to exit you from the city, and you just keep coming back. And I am hopeful that you will come back again, that this is not your last hurrah. You have this history of doing that, whether it's the Pasadena Council, and you do that for a while and then come back. I just think it's in your nature, and obviously, using the podium today as you did so eloquently to not just say goodbye, but to do a call to action, I really appreciate that. And your eloquence is, some of your phrasing is worthy of Johnny Cochran, "To avoid abuse, you must make power diffuse," is I think what you said. Or that's what they did, I guess. I have really enjoyed working with you for many years. You know, I've had the privilege of knowing you through many of your iterations, but you have been a consistent through-line as a transformer and a changemaker in all the different capacities that I've known you. You know, all the things that you're talking about are things that we've talked about back when you were doing the innovation as deputy mayor for Garcetti in Santa Monica in your variety of different capacities. And we've been able to work well together to make some of those things happen, to create some accountability, move, you know, nudge us more towards, if not performance budgeting, but at least performance-informed budgeting, and we're getting there. But I agree that we need to move at a faster clip, and I appreciate your call to action on that. And most of all, I just wanted to stand up to express my gratitude to you for all that you've done and that you continue to do, because this is not a goodbye to public service. This is just a shift in where your focus is going to be, and I know that you'll still be a phone call away when all of us want to call on you for your learned advice and your eloquence. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker, for bringing in this longstanding public servant here to say thank you, Rick. You know, I had the opportunity to first work with you when you were serving as the first deputy mayor of Budget and Innovation for Mayor Garcetti, and I was serving on the Board of Public Works. And your parting gift was a little nugget of cash that allowed me to overhaul L.A. Bavin, because I had talked to you about the need for us to make it a more constructive user interface, that we had to have a system that wasn't designed by how we work, but it was designed to make sure that the business community could navigate it and figure out how to access and make it accessible. And it was working with John Reamer, and I remember working with certain members of the city family quietly, so no one could come mess with what we were doing, meeting bi-weekly, and we got it done in nine months' time. And I want to say thank you, because had you not allocated those resources, it wouldn't then now have the successor of now every, you know, because it became en vogue, everyone talked about procurement reform, no one ever actually did the lift and the work. Because then what became en vogue was to start twiddling on the fringes of it. And so I want to thank you, because so often, what is celebrated as leadership is performative. You have been the example of actually saying the hard truth, just as you did moments ago, about what real leadership looks like. And it's about the diligence of actually pursuing and seeing the material change. So I want to thank you for being one of those individuals that helped to lead the material change, not just here at City Hall, but in all the variety of public roles that you've had. And I look forward to that continued work that I'm sure will come back in Pasadena. And thank you for all of your years of service here to us in our city and to all of the Southern California region that has benefited from your example and leadership. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McCosker, for bringing this real hero to us today. You know, Rick, you certainly are a strong public servant in and out of office, right? And in and out of the classroom. You know, you certainly have continued to demonstrate a level of competence and caring. And I think above all, your words are always kind, well, maybe not always kind, but they're kind-spirited and well-thought, as we heard just recently. And so we just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And you've certainly been a friend to justice and equality as a principle, guiding principle. So we just really appreciate your service over the years, your continued service over the years, appreciate your family sharing you with us, and we just want to say congratulations, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember McCosker, for bringing in this exciting but also saddening presentation. Rick, ever since I met you, I haven't known you for long, I've known your wife longer, actually, about a decade. But, you know, ever since meeting you and seeing how you've been backing up Kenneth and making sure that, you know, your team moves in the right direction, that you're uplifting the things that we need to be talking about, particularly around our budget, I'm grateful for those moments. I'm grateful for you speaking up and giving us some guidance on how we should be moving. You know, we have promotions now around a multi-year budget cycle, and that does come from a lot of the conversations that we had with y'all. So just thank you. Please keep pushing in Pasadena, because you're not very far away. You're the neighbor to the 14th and the first, and we're going to, you know, make sure that we can keep our eyes on you to continue to follow the lead that you all put out there. So just don't go too far, because I think in this moment, we all need to stick together and keep moving on the things we know are based on the foundation of loving our community and moving our community forward and being fiscally responsible. So thank you so much, and good luck on everything you're going to be doing in your next endeavor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember, Councilmember Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my wonderful seatmate for creating this opportunity and bringing the great Houdini back to the council chambers. Rick, Councilman, I've known you since '96 when I was a young Coro fellow, and you taught me a great lesson as you're also now leaving some coal nuggets behind. But back then, you spent well over an hour talking to me, just a random kid who called you up, to seek advice on a placement for an internship, because in the Coro year, we need to come up with two, at that time, we needed to come up with our own design placement. And you spent well over an hour in one call and subsequent calls as well to help me with my placement. Taught me a very valuable lesson, and it was something that I remembered over and over in my years as I grew older in the process as a staffer, to always spend time talking to folks that may just be getting a start. And they have nothing to offer but just their energy and malleable sense of wanting to make a difference. And so I appreciate that lesson that you taught me back then, and it's something that I've espoused myself. Appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nazarian. Councilmember Roman.
Thank you so much for being here today, and Councilmember McCosker, and Controller Mejia for organizing this as a send-off for Rick. Rick, I think a lot of us met you when you were working at Garcetti's office, and I, when Mayor Garcetti had set up your position, I think it was a testament to the way in which you thought about how the city functioned. It was a new and unique way of thinking about Los Angeles and how this city, which is fragmented, clunky, sometimes unnecessarily bureaucratic, often unnecessarily bureaucratic, how we could use someone like you with your approach and intellect, thinking about how we could reorganize the city to make it function more effectively in service of the residents of Los Angeles. And that is the mindset that you brought to your work with Mayor Garcetti. It's the work that you've brought to the Controller's Office, and I just want to thank you for your many, many years of service to Los Angeles. You will be missed deeply, but I still have your phone number, so I plan to call on you for guidance and advice as we move forward about untangling the knots that we have ahead of us as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roman. Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thanks so much, Controller Mejia and Councilmember McCosker, for bringing in Rick. You know, I, we had a different history before coming into these chambers, mostly in Santa Monica, but I really appreciate getting to know you as a person, the passion that you bring. And, you know, I got to say, this, we're so busy in council with so many things going on, but you do have an ability to sort of shake us out of our rut, and I see Councilmember nodding his head. Every time you spoke at PAU, you sort of allowed me to reflect on the city in a way that most people are not able to do that with me. You're doing it here today, and I just want to say, that is a gift and a talent that is pretty rare, and I want to acknowledge that in front of here, everybody here today. It's a moment for us to reflect about what we're actually doing in the city and try to create the North Star again. And so I am going to miss that about you, but I have no doubts that, it sounds like you've retired a couple times from here, so maybe this won't be the last time. I think you'll continue to be a leader in this region. And again, just thank you so much for everything you've done, everything you've done for folks and everything you've contributed to the city. I'm sure we'll cross paths many more times. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez. Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be quick. I just want to thank you, Rick, for all of your years of friendship and mentorship, the compassion and clarity and intelligence and incisive understanding of what ails us consistently for as long as I've known you, since I was a Coro fellow, longer ago than I wish to admit, has been consistent and humbling and informative and always, you've always been available to be of service. You are a true public servant, and so I just want to thank you for a long career of giving a damn consistently, over and over and over again. It's inspiring to me and to my team, so thank you.
Thank you so much, members. Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Thank you, Mr. Cole. I just want to add to everything that the members have said, tremendous gratitude on behalf of the people, not just of Los Angeles but of Southern California. You have a special talent and commitment about how to make the government work, and as you pointed out, even when it's intentionally set up to not work, you always stand out to me because of dozens and dozens and dozens of people that we encounter when we're trying to get things done on behalf of our district. About 85% of them start off with why you can't do what you are trying to get done. And then 50% of those followed up with a second reason why you can't do what needs to be done. And you always start with, this is how you get to your goal, and that is deeply appreciated and deeply felt in the communities, even from people who will never know your name or see your face. They see the material changes that you help get made. And I thank you for thinking enough of the people to do that on our behalf, because you could make a lot of money doing that on behalf of lots of profiteering and corporate interests. They pay lots of money for that, by the way. You could do that to fatten your pockets and to build your nest egg and generational wealth and all the other things that they say, but you've decided to do it on behalf of the people of Southern California, and for that, we are extremely and eternally grateful. Councilmember McCosker.
We have one more nugget of Cole.
I couldn't leave the podium without introducing another public servant in our family, my sister, who's been a docent at the zoo for 31 years, Lisa Mill.
I was inspired to come back to City Hall by Kenneth Mejia, and the next generation inspire me. To all the staffers around this dais, it's an incredible privilege to work in this building, and you don't know where your path will lead you, but it has been an incredibly gratifying career for me to be in public service, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you. And on behalf of all of us, Rick, we have this beautiful certificate to you with all of the many lovely things you've done for us, and please come forward so everyone can get a picture. Thank you, members. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCosker. Another big round of applause for the inimitable Rick Cole. And as we're closing this presentation and before we go to public comment, members, we started yesterday giving short vignettes from our district about the impact of the federal government's actions in our streets, the daily tackleings and kidnappings and maulings that we see in our streets, not just our city but cities around Southern California in the name of immigration reform and enforcement. And so today, we'll hear from the 14th Council District Councilmember Isabel Jurado.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise today carrying the sorrow of our community and the responsibility to Colleagues, I rise today carrying the sorrow of our community and the responsibility to protect those who make our city whole. On June 6th, 14 garment workers, fathers, sons, uncles, brothers, were forcibly detained by ICE during a raid at their workplace. These men, many of them indigenous Zapotec, are beloved members of their communities and vital threads in the fabric of Los Angeles. They are part of an industry built on the labor of immigrants and too often repaid with wage theft, unsafe conditions, and retaliation. Their names are Tomas, Juan Fernando, Jose Paulino, Jacob, Miguel, Oscar, Uriel, Lazaro, Filimon, Ismael, Ronaldo, Luis, Mario, and Jorge. That day, their workplace became a place of nightmares. These men were taken without explanation and their families were left without answers. But the community did not stay silent. Advocates stood outside the warehouse for hours shouting legal advice through the walls, refusing to leave and showing the kind of solidarity that keeps our communities safe and whole. Among them was David Huerta of SEIU, a champion for working people who has spent his life defending others. Today, I'm honored to welcome a family member of one of the 14 men, someone whose life has been upended and who brings with them not only grief, but also resilience. Their presence here today is more than personal, it is an act of courage, of truth and resistance, and I ask that we listen with open hearts. Please join me in welcoming Uriel, who will now share her story.
Hello, my name is Urien, daughter of Mario, who was kidnapped by ICE on June 6th, 2025 at Ambiance Warehouse. I'm here today on behalf of my father and 14 indigenous Zapotec Ambiance workers, who were kidnapped by ICE on June 6th, 2025. My siblings raging from four months to 20 years and I need our father, especially my four-year-old brother, who has a disability and asked us about his dad. What happened that day was a very traumatic experience. Watching my father be taken away and chained by hands, feet, and waist, unable to do anything, was horrible. Little did we know, it was only the beginning of a inhumane, of the inhuman conditions they would all endure. After my father was detained at the Ambiance location, we couldn't locate my father for a week. We were worried that we wouldn't, we could not find my father. And when we were able to find him, we found my daddy, my dad in the worst conditions no human should ever go through. My father was in the same clothes from when I last saw him. He was given no medicine and little to no food. As we speak, as I speak to you right now, my father is caged with over 80 people and I didn't, and I don't even know if he has eaten today. The conditions are horrible and my father can not access legal counsel, even though there are lawyers ready to support my father and other folks that are detained. I was lucky to find my father, but other members of our community, community cannot find them. My daughter turned two years old on Monday and I couldn't help but feel deep sadness and anger because they ripped my dad apart from us and the horrible conditions he is in. My dad is a father, a grandfather, a contributing member of this community. Our communities do not deserve to be racially profiled, haunted, and kidnapped. I call on all elected officials from LA Mayor Bass to local law and statewide representatives, officials to step up to continue defending LA status as a sanctuary city by prohibiting any collaboration or protection of immigrant enforcement, immigration enforcement by local law enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jurado, and thank you for the courage to stand up and tell your story to us and to everyone watching. With that, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you can prepare us for public comment.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the Council President. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you may forfeit your speaking, the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items one through three, which are business improvement district items, items 30 through 33, and items 35 through 46. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items one through three, items 30 through 33, and items 35 through 46. Item number 34 has been continued. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. I have a couple more announcements. If I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please? If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. One final announcement. In order to help us run a inefficient public comment period, I would ask that you please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud before lining up. The order in which we take public speakers is at random. It is, the list is randomly generated based on the people who have signed up. So again, once you hear the name that you signed up under read aloud, you can line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers in any order. Thank you.
I'll begin calling names. Jason Ridi, Scientology, and Karen Song.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Let's start with item number one. Ah, move on to item number two. Let's move on to item number three. General public comment. Thank you. Uh, I'm here, I want to speak to our community leader, Mr. Herman, and our community leader, law attorney, Mr. Spindler. I want to have a chance to stay in city of LA and I want to make sure, city attorney, can you please do not deport me? I want to make sure that our council president, Harris Dawson, can you please do not deport me? Because our council president, Harris Dawson, made it very clear, he is going to protect every single black illegal immigrant. But however, I am Caucasian, so I want to make sure, our city attorney, can you please protect every single law-abiding Caucasian illegal immigrant? Because we deserve to live in the city, we deserve to have free food, free housing, free healthcare, free prostitute, and then free Figueroa services. So please do not deport me, I want to stay smoking scan, smoking scan, I, I want to stay, allow me a chance to stay, smoking scan, please.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Bike Guy, Mona Peterson, and Judge Edward Chen.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, yes, good morning, all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. I want to ask that you begin with them and then you will have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
So we have a couple motions here on several bids that frankly, I know for a fact haven't met. In fact, one of them hasn't even met for a quarter. Now, how can you possibly vote on motions that your bid hasn't even met to offer public comment for people to actually file their grievances? How can you possibly take any sort of vote when you haven't even contacted the neighborhood council for which these bids are in the same district as and they still acknowledge that they haven't met? And you're trying to vote on a motion that has to do with a bid and whether you can trust in their confidence that they're actually executing the will of the people? How is it that you have bids like Hollywood bid that literally do not meet for over a quarter and yet at the same time, right, at the same time, you're still allowing them to go and have motions here before the council? How is it that a bid can still have a motion that you are agreeing to or not agreeing to today when they have not met to even take public comment, which is the whole point of the city council and the neighborhood councils as well? We're going to talk next about some of the housing items on the agenda today. If you haven't heard, all right, if you haven't heard, there was an order made on the receivership. And guess what Carter said today on the receivership? Carter said, screw your receivership, you're going to report to the court for a minimum of five years, I want to see exactly what you do on a quarterly basis. I trust none of you corrupt assholes. And for that, right, for that, the people are now seeing exactly which of you guys have nonprofit involvement, which of these assessorships are legitimate or not, and how many people are in any of these assessorships or not? How many people are actually constituted in a unit? How many beds are in a, a unit? And what even is the definition of a bed? Right? That's what Judge Carter said.
So I'm looking at the agenda, this does not appear to be related to any of the items that are open. You can speak to it during general, but please stick to the items.
So item 36 is a, yet, item 36 is yet another assessorship, yet another item that was on the Judge Carter case for fraud, right, for homeless fraud in the city of LA. And you know what Carter said to that extent? Here's what Carter said. Carter said, fuck the city council and fuck the Los Angeles.
Okay, so this is your final warning. Item 36 is a REAP item, a rent escrow account program item. So if you'd like to continue speaking to this, you can during general, but stick to the items for the next 43 seconds.
That's fine. Can you at least give me back the 12 seconds? So you're not giving, all right, so I'll take that yet as another prior restraint on my public comment here today. And I'm on your ass, city attorney. You know I'm on your ass about those complaints and you know I'm going to complain with those civil claims.
So I'm going to move you to general public comment. You've been warned three times now. You have one minute for general. Go ahead.
So again, why are we here today, right? We are here today because Marquisi is arguing with the staffers on what criteria is constituted as the sexiest man alive in the city of Los Angeles and his staffers are annoyed, right? The staffers are annoyed that Marquisi is getting to these sort of arguments, right? This is the type of stuff that Marquisi does with the staffers. And how do I know this? Well, because your staffers telling me, Marquisi. How about you go and stop arguing with your staffers, stop having choice words with them, and instead do your job, Marquisi? Like, for example, not restricting my public comment when I'm trying to talk to the mayor of Bass over a secret meeting that she has behind the council chambers here, that you don't even allow people to get into unless they specifically know it's in that hallway, right? How about you do that, Marquisi? How about you do that? How about instead of arguing with your staffers over dumb shit like what makes the sexiest man alive, right? You instead do that, Marquisi? How about that? How about you stop complaining to your staffers and you do that, Marquisi? All right? How's that for knowing which of you guys have snitches on the inside? And for that, I'm going to be reporting on the Judge Carter case, fuck the city council, and Hugo still can't look me in the eyes. Fuck you too, Hugo.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Edgman Hakobian, Haggas, and Eric R.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I think it's one, two, 44, 45, I want to think, and then whatever else we figure out on.
Okay, so.
And for the comment.
Understood. So you have three minutes for the items, one and two are the bid items. And so please begin with the items, you have three minutes and you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, well, one and two deals with streets and everything. And I, I just want to say that when it comes to working on streets or anything dealing with streets, just a reminder that people cannot be earning slave wages when they're dealing with streets. And I don't think you guys do enough to really make sure that there's not any kind of labor trafficking when it coming dealing with streets. Because I see all the time on L. Ron Hubbard Way, and this is a comparison, that I see people who are getting slave wages, working on a public street. And I don't know how that's allowed. I keep hearing there's a MOU for them to, for Scientology to be able to maintain that street. But streets are streets, right? Well, with number one and two, right, we're dealing with streets. And I just want to make sure.
They're the creation of business improvement districts. So you can speak to that during general, but I'm asking you to stick to the items first.
Oh, okay, well, business improvement, another thing that they're involved with, because with the business improvement district, they should, there should be a rule that they have to be in good standing, okay? If you're on a business improvement district. If you have a seat, right, you should not be, have cases against you that involve child brides or, or Rico, civilian Rico, I would think. Because now the East Hollywood bid, they have a Scientologist, the Scientology has a seat on that bid and they are in court right now on a child bride case. Imagine a child bride, you know, not volunteering, but you know, whatever. And then a civilian Rico case, so why are they on a bid? Are you guys monitoring who seats on these bids and if they're in good standing? Like, we wouldn't want, you know, criminals or anyone, you know, who, you know, does bad things on our bids, right? Because we, we need to feel safe. So anyone that would have Rico cases against them, I don't feel safe having them on my bid. Now, as for the other ones, the 44 or 45 with the seniors, you know, I see that you're trying to do healthcare for seniors, which is great. But do you know that there's a lot of seniors trapped in the Blue Building in different areas with Church of Scientology? Although you're not allowed to die in there, they don't allow people to die in there. So they moved them to the, they have like a hospice a few blocks away, which is a very sad place. Because after the Lisa McPherson case, Ms. Cabbage basically decided that no one's going to die at a flag org or flagship, you know, and that's the big blue building. So they had to be put elsewhere to die. But they don't believe in proper medication or proper, you know, anything medical. So I hope that this, whatever you're doing with 44 and 45, that you would make sure that these seniors are covered, because nobody should have to have any, you know, not be cared for after they gave their lives to this organization, some would call a cult. I would, but I'll be nice. But, you know, like, they should be cared for. Okay, public comment.
Thank you for getting back on the items. You'll now have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to shout out to Smoke and Scan, because Smoke and Scan and I are very, very concerned about this randomizer. We don't believe it exists. And, Mr. City Attorney, you and I spoke about this briefly in the hall yesterday. Smoke and Scan and I do not believe it exists. And if it does exist, it's calibrated wrong or there's some kind of shenanigans, because we tested it, we tested it, sorry, can't, I probably need more coffee. And we put in maybe 50 different names, okay? And just to test it, because we keep getting, not getting called. Whenever the unions are here, none of the gadflies really are called. And I'm just calling us gadflies out of like, you know, a
The purpose of the randomizer is to give everybody the equal opportunity of being selected at any given meeting. Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Mr. Spindler and this man in the t-shirt, I'll kindly ask you to take your seats, it's very distracting to hear the great words that Mr. Herman is going to say.
And with that, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Whoa, look at this RV parking with HUD and Beach this morning, right, Ms. Augustine? It was amazing. It's amazing that we have alleged violations against veterans who use their motorhomes and their trailers attached as a Housing Accountability Act. You are so disgraceful. That's number forty-seven, jackass. Are you looking good? Then dickhead, on item number one, two, and three, I'll start off on number one, dick.
Forty-seven is not open for public comment, so you were off topic, you said forty-seven earlier, I'm clarifying for you. Please stick to the agenda items, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment, go ahead.
Dickhead, I'm on L.A. Improvement District, fuck you on item number one. Item number two, another Improvement District on item two in CD-10, fuck you and fuck Hut Two. And Herb Wesson. Look at item three, dickface with the pimples on your face, oh, dog eater, Business Improvement District. The close of a hearing and will be publicly livestreamed. What's livestreamed, dickhead? My voice is livestreamed, thank you, Smoke and Scan. Let's go into the housings, those seven items on housing, dickface. Let's take in one. Item number thirty, dickface, fucking communication from the fucking bastards of Los Angeles Housing Department. Thank you for the resolution, David O. Carter. Yes, we will monitor L.A., we will monitor housing.
So as was explained to the previous speaker, these are REAP items, they are rent escrow account program items, has nothing to do with the L.A. Alliance case and Judge Carter.
Look at here, dickface, another motion by the fucking racist Soto Martinez and noodle, 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 noodle. Oh yeah, relative amending for fucking council action, June tenth, twenty twenty-five. CF for cunt fuckers, twenty-five, zero-five, eight-eight. District CD thirteen, suck a big one, like the one in my flyer I had earlier, but, let's go on. Recommendation, council bitch, mayor's approval when we're in a budget crisis. But to amend this shit, Smoke and Scan, you got it. What does the nigger know? Yep, I'll tell you. To clarify, four hundred and thirty-eight, to transfer the appropriations to white nigger council portion projects, item general city purpose, fuck you. Now into my general public comment.
General public comment.
U.S. three ninety-five, U.S. three ninety-five, four-four-four, nineteen sixty-nine, a dirty nigger L.A. L.A. is the racist, dirty nigger council of fifteen dirty niggers and two specific dirty niggers who brought emotional harm and stress to veterans. Thank you, cockadoodle do Bob Bloomfield and fucking dumb hag, pinche pioja puta mexicana tonta babosa idiota. Noodle noodle bra, right? Where's Price? Ms. Hut, where is Ms. Hut? I wanna talk about her real name, Agostina. I wanna talk about Agostina's relationship with Price and his second fucking wife and their criminal enterprise with you, Mr. Dawson. You guys got a little clique, huh? I can't wait when the FBI roll up on your ass, nigga. And those motherfuckers ain't playing games like they did to that Florida fucking judge. The DOJ arrested that motherfucker, Edward Chen, fuck you.
And your time has expired, if we hear you again, you will be subject to Rule Seven or Rule Twelve, which means a warning and potential removal from the meeting. Expect you to be silent for the rest of the meeting and to not disrupt this meeting. Speaker, before you begin, I, for anybody who's tuning in for the first time, apologize for the words that you just heard and the words you might hear moving forward, they do not reflect the view of this city, they do not reflect the view of this body, they do not reflect the view of anyone around this horseshoe. We appreciate your patience, the goals I can only imagine is to antagonize not only us, but the members of the public. The quickest way and the easiest way to get through this is to just let it play out. So we apologize again, we appreciate all of your patience to the listeners remotely and to the people in the room. Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
General.
Okay, so you have one minute.
First, good morning, the council. Now, I have a problem, L.A. is not a safe place. First and Los Angeles, the RD is one twenty-four yesterday, I know it was pickpocket or two-eleven, I had my phone due to severe laziness this way, because I didn't want to dive too far in the, in any case, I was sitting on the bike at an intersection, a guy comes up to me, I'm black, my height, approximately skinny, one sixty, with a Union purple shirt. I need some money, you know, very aggressive, and I'm like, I'm broke, need it. And I didn't dawn on me, when he reached here, he pulled out, I had to go in pursuit, I got the wallet phone back, but he took some money. But the point is, what are we gonna do about these people? This, the Olympics are coming, we're gonna have a lot of people getting ripped off, and it ain't right. I realize that's the border of Skid Row, but still, it's L.A. city, and something needs to be done to stop the BS. I'm hoping we can do something about it. And then the second issue is, I'm glad the hotel and the Universal's not coming up. Have a good day, Cammy.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Donald Harlan, Alina Hampstand, Kim, Donnie Jones, Seba, and Groot.
Sorry, Speaker, before you begin, so if you have additional comments that you'd like to make and you run out of time, or if we run out of time and you're not able to come to the podium to speak, please remember that you can always provide additional written public comments at la council comment dot com. Again, that's la council comment dot com. Good morning, Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Incompetent Mayor Karen Bass and council members, you were elected to fix Los Angeles, not to do media tours. Stop glorifying illegal alien criminals at the expense of L.A.'s legal residents. Stop vilifying our law enforcement officers. Mayor Bass, every time you open your mouth on TV, you bring shame to this city and showcase your collective incompetence on the world stage. We all watch you call your sponsored terrorist peaceful protesters while they destroyed the city for seven days. Mayor Bass, your demonization of ICE officers must stop before it results in injury or death. You have compared lawful arrests to kidnapping and terrorism to protect the murderers, rapists, pedophiles, and gang members you refuse to turn over. Deportation orders are issued by federal judges, not by ICE officers. That was the law under President Obama, Biden, and now our magnanimous President Trump.
Speaker, your time has expired, next speaker.
I signed up as Eric R., I'll speak to all items and general public comment.
Okay, good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Alright, so, we're gonna start off with item number thirty-seven, I think it is. So we have a few items from staffer B, kind of interesting, actually, it looks like you're actually taking money away from the police, that's actually good if that's what that is. Do more of it, take money away from the LAPD, give it towards other things that actually keep people safe. And we have item forty, which is lighting up City Hall and recognition of the, I guess the victims of the Pulse nightclub fire in North Macedonia. This is from June tenth, I guess, so you're doing this like fifteen days late, something like that, after it already happened? So, so what is this city gonna do otherwise to help the people from North Macedonia? That's a good question. Giving, donating some funds or just lighting up City Hall to make it look like, I don't know. We have item forty-one, for various community projects and programs in Valley Village, and CD-two, hopefully these are good stuff and not bad stuff. We have item forty-two, the funding for services in connection with L.A. pride. So, I guess it's good that you're doing that. Of course, you know, as always, the LAPD continues brutalizing members of the LGBTQ community and you do absolutely nothing about it.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, Yenisee's, turning it back to me right now, why was your chief of staff, you know, calling protesters in an ICE raid cops last week? It sounds like that was happening, Yenisee's? Your chief of staff was accusing protesters in an ICE raid of being cops? You know, people protesting these violent kidnappings by masked, these violent extremist ICE agents in plainclothes and ski masks, won't identify themselves or anything, none of you do anything, are actually really doing anything here. You do these little, you know, recognitions of the impacts it's causing, but meanwhile, the LAPD is continuing to assist ICE, they just did yesterday, just not too far from here in downtown. Assisting ICE again, brutalizing protesters, and you all say nothing, do absolutely nothing about it. Cancel your reset.
Next speaker.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I will speak to the public at this clown show of incompetence on all available items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Item one, two, and three are the establishment of so-called business improvement districts. In my opinion, the funding should come from the multi-billion dollar budget and not the Is anybody out there stupid enough to believe that demonic Tracy Park or illegitimately appointed incompetent Heather the Hut Hut, our indicted criminal out on bail Kern Price or dimwit Nithian Ramon who has done nothing but purchase new clothing outfits, knows how to increase business commerce in these areas? In my opinion, increasing true business commerce is critical to the cities and job creation. However, taxing the businesses through these ordinances of business improvement districts is worthless because the demonic Tracy Park, illegitimately appointed incompetent Heather the Hut Hut, indicted criminal out on bail Kern Price and dimwit Nithia Ramon have no clue of how to use the funds to improve business. The money will simply go into the general fund for these blithering idiots to waste by giving it to the LAPD or themselves, embezzling indicted Kern Price and sleazy Marquise Dawson. Thirty to thirty-six is for the removal of properties from the REAP account. In my opinion, the REAP account funds collected should be returned to the property owners and funded by the one billion dollars these blithering incompetent self-serving corrupt idiots Tim Makosker gave the L.A. Police Department last year, bankrupting the city into a one billion dollar deficit. In my opinion, all REAP funds for these properties should be investigated by the Attorney General as to why sleazy Marquise Dawson and indicted Kern Price are embezzling and funneling REAP account funds into their favorite contractors' pockets for kickbacks into their own pockets. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine is ethics violating indicted racist Asian John Lee to give another two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the LAPD for overtime. John Lee has to be the dumbest racist agent on the planet, and these motions, he and his clown council are going to give hundreds of thousands more money to the LAPD after voting for the one billion dollar LAPD budget increase that put our city in the current billion dollar deficit emergency, where six hundred fifty thousand city workers are projected to lose their jobs and public services. Stupid, stupid, stupid. Item forty is for the dimwit Ramon and Soto Martinez special recognition of the Pulse nightclub fire. They are hypocrites when they bid absolutely nothing to prevent the city burning down with two hundred fifty-six billion dollars in fire damage. In my opinion, and all of the items should be received a no vote if indicted out on bail embezzling polygamist Kern Price and criminally insane Dawson are.
General public comment.
This L.A. council is an incompetent corrupt enterprise of organized crime. One billion dollar budget emergency, homeless epidemic emergency, two hundred seventy-five billion fire damage, with sixteen thousand structures and six thousand homes burned emergency. The Attorney General, the FBI, and IRS currently in a massive investigation of our corrupt sleazy city governments, misappropriation of billions in homeless funds. The good news, Dawson and his crew are going to jail. Karen Bass, deputy mayor for public, or her deputy mayor for public safety indicted for making bomb threats. Kern Price indicted, currently on trial, marked the thirty-year pimp Ribley Thomas, convicted. Racist Asian John Lee indicted for ethics violations. Aaron Martinez, Gilbert Cidio, and Kevin Leon ousted for insane racism. Jose Huizar, twelve years. Sleazy Marquise Dawson currently under investigation. Councilman Englander.
Next speaker. So, Mr. Spindler, if you'd like to speak, I need you to make your way to the podium expeditiously. Otherwise, I'm going to warn you for disrupting this meeting because we need to move on. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Alright, now let's see here, city living, we have Tracy Park, formerly known as Tracy Beach in the court system. So let's see here, this is Article thirteen. Let's see here, an Article thirteen, Bob, what is an Article thirteen? That's a court martial, but I don't think we're talking about that, no, we're talking about taxes.
Which item are you speaking to?
I'm talking about number one, crazy fucking nigga. Now, we're gonna have a livestream for ballots. Let's give Tracy Park a hand in her transparency. This is very good, that's right. And we're gonna count the ballots, I have good news, you defeated it, but the bad news is because they're counting it, you lose. It's right. Then we get number two, the illustrious Heather Augustine of the tenth district is doing another Article thirteen D as well. Sitting there feeding her family up in the backs of the middle class. Why? Why are you taxing people who are poor over there south of the ten freeway? Nobody got no money there? Say no, and then number three, Hamburger Hernandez is also doing the same crime. But I got good news, I will trade this sandwich if you'll take item three off of the ballot, I will give you this food. Come and eat, I got your food. No, alright, must be in a debt. Now we gonna get some more shit, let's see here, because it doesn't matter what I say, it doesn't matter what I do, I'm just another fool. Number CD-two and number thirty, why, that is the Armenian goat herd at two point oh. And of course, it's a rent escrow, congratulations on being emancipated, thirty-one. Also, the evil Tracy Beach, notice Tracy Park getting her landlord rejected off of the assessor rolls. Good job, just remember everybody, if you have cockroaches in your bathroom and your boss is your landlord, all you gotta do, the landlord, is do three things, you gotta pay off the council member, pay off the building inspector, and donate to the various nonprofits on the list, available on www.bobblemanbleedisasnitch.net, you wanna check that out. And then we have number thirty-three, KKKKDR Sluski, the worst thing to happen to Jews since Donald Trump bombed Iran.
So this is not on the agenda, this is your only warning? You're on general public comment.
I'm on general public comment, can I have my public comment? Alright, so now, today Judge Carter stabbed me in the back. My Vietnam veteran brother stabbed me in the back, he's letting He's letting Nithia noodle 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 keep control of all that nonprofit slush fund money. That means I'm not gonna shut you down. My brother, you have turned your back on me. Now I'm gonna have to expose on Friday something I know about. I didn't want to talk about it, but I gots to tell the truth. And then remember, the indicted one Kern Demille Price Jr. goes back to court in August with his fifth new judge, Judge Cole. Let's give him a hand. So you see, Judge Cohen is the new judge. He used to be a gang prosecutor, Price. I don't think you want him as your judge. You might get fucking seven years. I take a look at your.
And your time has expired. Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names.
All right, hold on. Before you call the names, Mr. Spindler, this is your first and only formal warning. Do not yell out while staffer trying to make announcements allowed to the room. If you do it again, you'll be subject to Council Rule seven and twelve and potentially removed. I'm sorry, staffer, go ahead.
August Willich, Damon Alfred Vasquez, Karen Peterson, Smoke and Scan, and Antonio Ramirez.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
We'll just say all items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll start with item forty-three. This is a no-bid lease contract with an organization called North Valley Carrying Services. This is an organization, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that supports unhoused residents with things like food, showers, clean clothes, and safe overnight parking. This is a noble mission, obviously, but it's a little frustrating that rather than dealing with the cause of these issues, this body would prefer to deal with the symptoms and funnel more money into administrative salaries and subsidized 501(c)(3)'s. Safe parking in particular caught my attention because we keep having motions on our agenda to create more no overnight parking zones. So while this body further pushes unhoused residents who live in their cars to the fringes, then we're funneling money into a 501(c)(3) that offers safe parking, why don't we just offer safe parking? And why doesn't this organization have to bid? I don't know if it's unique, a food pantry and unhoused resident services, there's a lot of those. Maybe another one would give us a better deal. There's also motions on this agenda regarding the Los Angeles Department of Aging related to health care, new accounts and appropriations to fund services for our esteemed residents, the senior citizen population. Again, we have this issue of unhoused, the fastest growing population of unhoused residents right now are senior citizens. I have a neighbor who lives on Social Security and she is struggling and she deals with harassment from our landlord. And again, rather than dealing with the cause, this organization would rather put a Band-Aid on the symptom and then expect things to change, but it ends up costing us more money over time. And our citizens, our esteemed residents, they deserve better. We had celebrities up here earlier talking about Alzheimer's, and there was a remark about, oh, even though they're dealing with hard things, they get to laugh sometimes. I guess if they're wealthy, they might get to laugh. A lot of senior citizens dealing with Alzheimer's are also poor, and their families are struggling to get their basic needs met. So these are just, it's good that we're addressing these things, but it's a matter of how are we addressing them? Are we dealing with causes or symptoms? We're really only dealing with symptoms and then wondering, where's all our money going? We also have several rent escrow account program items. Someone, I don't remember if it was Daniel Gus or Eric Previn, said over the phone, we don't hear from them anymore because we don't have phone comments, they said REAP clearly works. I have to say, with as often as we see it on the agenda, it seems like it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's a deterrent for bad actors as far as landlords go. And it's also shitty for tenants who have to pay for what they're not getting.
General public comment?
We're in a fiscal emergency. We're in a fiscal emergency. The mayor said the controller was wrong. He was right all along. Why weren't you listening to what he was projecting? Your revenue forecast was wrong. Now all our money's gone. This fiscal emergency is a lack of competency, and we can't pretend you didn't cause this. It's really all your fault that these layoffs are occurring and we're suffering because we've seen you lie way too many times while our unhoused neighbors die. It is a crime. You party on our dime while we struggle to survive. Shout out Smoke and Scan and fuck you all sincerely.
All right, that concludes public comment for today's meetings. Madam Clerk? All right, Mrs. City Attorney has a bid announcement.
Yes, so public comment on all of the other items are closed. I recognize, I think, most everybody here who has spoken, but if you are here for the business improvement district, okay, so.
You're disrupting the meeting, please stop.
An only formal warning, please do not disrupt the instructions that I'm trying to give to the audience. So if you are here for items one, two, or three, and you have not yet spoken, right? So if you're here for items one, two, or three, this is the business improvement district items, then please line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Again, this is not general public comment, this is not any of the other items, it's just one, two, or three, the establishment of the business improvement district items. Going once, going twice. So, Mr. President, I do not see anybody making their way.
Nor do I. Nor do I. All right, Madam Clerk, what items are available for consideration at this time?
Mr. President, the first item that is available would be item twenty-four, and for that one, Mr. Price is recused.
All right, so we will take up item number twenty-four once we've given Councilmember Price the opportunity to recuse. All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
To our eyes.
All right, we'll invite Mr. Price back to the.
And, Mr. President, while Mr. Price is making his way back, may I read for items one through three for the bids. The public hearing for this, for these items are now closed. Tabulation of the ballots shall take place in Room 223 of City Hall immediately following the close of the hearing and will be publicly livestreamed. For directions to access the livestream, visit clerk.lacity.org/bids. Public announcement of the tabulation of ballots is on Tuesday, July 1, 2025. And sir, council may now vote on items one through three, thirty through thirty-three, as well as thirty-five through forty-six, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirty-nine.
All right, what's next?
Next would be closed session, sir.
All right, we'll ask everyone to prepare the room for closed session. So that would include council members, city staff, council staff, mayor, city attorney, Controller's Office, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Before we go into closed session, if I can call forty-three forthwith.
Fourthwith without objection, yes.
Yes, will do, but for the record, all items on today's agenda are forthwith.
for ten free summer concerts at MacArthur Park. Each Saturday in summer, Levitt Pavilion welcomes a new sound to the stage. Enjoy Latin soul, jazz fusion, Afro beats, and the sounds of Central America along with electric rock and punk. Levitt Pavilion is the place to get your global groove on with something for everyone. These free concerts are supported by the City Departments of Cultural Affairs and Recreation and Parks and are sponsored by Councilmember Yenisee Hernandez. See you on the lawn to celebrate music and community each Saturday starting at 7:00 P.M., except July 5th as there's no show that day. For more information, visit levittlosangeles.org. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a summer of free events with the Valley Cultural Foundation. The Fourth of July Extravaganza celebrates the nation's birthday with a free concert and a dazzling twenty-minute fireworks display. There will also be food trucks and vendors on site. Up to 40,000 people can be accommodated for this event, so get there early to claim your spot. The concert on July 4th features Strange Days, a tribute to the Doors, with other acts scheduled to perform in Warner Park over the next few weeks of summer. For more details on the Fourth of July Extravaganza and other free Warner Park events, check the website, valleycultural.org. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery, LAMAG, presents COLA 2025. This is an exhibition of the city's Department of Cultural Affairs Independent Master Artists of 2025, who share their creative visions on a wide range of themes. Nine L.A.-based artists in visual literary and performing arts will show their works, which include video, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and installation. Head to LAMAG at Barnes-Dahl Art Park for COLA 2025 Visual Artist Exhibition from July 17th to August 30th. For more information on gallery hours, visit lmag.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution, and according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency family preparedness, immigration options, rapid response phone numbers for L.A., and the Know Your Rights Card. The library's Know Your Rights Card is available to everyone online in 23 different languages. For more information, click on the Know Your Rights banner at lapl.org. Mayor Karen Bass announced that resources would be immediately available to support downtown businesses impacted by protests in the city. The mayor's Office for Economic Development, Councilmember Isabel Hurado, and the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department are providing help online. Impacted businesses can join webinars to learn more about assistance, including graffiti removal, legal aid, and employment support. According to Hurado, local businesses are the backbone of downtown L.A., and the council member's office will support them through every challenge. For more, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. Following the devastating wildfires in January, L.A. City's Housing Authority, HACLA, wants to let Angelenos know of a new source of relief for disaster survivors. Cal Assist Mortgage Fund is a new relief program from the state of California, which will support homeowners impacted by disasters between January 2023 and January 2025. The Cal Assist Mortgage Fund will cover eligible homeowners for three months of mortgage payments up to $20,000. Before applying, review the list of qualified disasters for this program, confirm the income limits, and check that your mortgage servicer is participating. For more information, visit calassistmortgagefund.org.
You have a least-scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council?
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any-
All right, so we're back in open session. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, anything to report?
Uh, so after, the answer's no, but, uh, and then I recommend that we take a roll as well.
Call the roll, yes, sorry.
Um, Blumenfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Hierado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, thirteen members pre- uh, present and in court, Mr. President.
In, in response to your earlier question, Mr. President, there is nothing to report out of closed session. Council did not take any action, but I believe that there is a motion that is going to be introduced.
All right, uh, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number 48, I move that we reject the settlement offer.
All right. It's been moved, seconded by Councilmember Jaroslawski. All right, uh, so this item is before us. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred announcements, members? Announcements, all right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise for Councilmember Nazarian.
For an announcement, not adjourning.
An announcement, okay.
Thank you. Uh, folks, I've already mentioned this last week. Uh, it's a wonderful honor to be presenting and showcasing Die Like a Man in honor of Gun Violence Awareness Month on June 27th and 28th. It'll be this coming Friday and Saturday at El Portal Theater, and, uh, it's, we're gonna also be hosting a question and answer afterwards with the director of the film, along with several of the, uh, actors and actresses. Um, I encourage everyone to join us at L.A. Valley College on the 27th, or El Portal Theater on June 28th for a free screening. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Nazarian. Any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, adjourning motions, members? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that you, we please adjourn in the memory of our beloved Abuela Nilda Linval. Born September 22nd, 1924, in Esperanza, Las Villas, Cuba. She was fiercely independent, a woman who left Cuba in 1955, settling in Washington Heights, New York City, pursuing what so many members of our community pursue here in this country: better opportunities and a better life. I think my husband said it best. The only thing she loved more than her independence was her family and her beliefs. She was never shy about telling you exactly how she felt and let you know why you were wrong. We were very kindred in that way. I was so thankful to have shared many moments with her, whether it was in our travels to New York or Miami, or her coming out to visit us here in California. I have so many wonderful memories with her, from our wedding to celebrating her 100th birthday last year in Miami. One of my favorite memories was the New Year's Eve in 2009. We were at home, I was recovering from a minor surgery, and, uh, it was about 9:00 p.m. that we got a call. And the kids, and Raoul and I, were just huddled up on the couch watching television, waiting for that New Year's, watching the New Year's ball drop in New York, when we got a phone call. And it was from Papito and Nilda, who were screaming on the other end of the phone because they said they couldn't hear us because they were at a party, New Year's Eve. Now, mind you, they were in their late 80s at the time. And here we were, in our mid-30s, and huddled up at home on the couch, but they were out living life. And it was a testimony to how she lived her life, that she never stayed home, she was always out and about, because her life's philosophy was you'll rest when you're dead. And it was that example that I'm, uh, so grateful for, that she imparted both with my husband and I, and our entire family, and my kids. Um, but it's one of the most treasured and favorite memories that I have of her, is just her, you know, her willingness and interest and, you know, she just lived life to the fullest. And she did it with, uh, with the family, and we have so many wonderful memories, and I'm really thankful for it. She is now reunited with her beloved siblings, Milena, Oña, Beno, and of course, Papito. I'm sure the party is lively up there. Her legacy continues in the lives of those of us that had the privilege of being related to her. Her children, my mother-in-law, Barbara Fontanills, Jose Maella, and Frank Charron, her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Abuela Nilda, may you rest in peace.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.